Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October meeting of the Planning Applications Committee. I've just got to read out the usual notice about use of the technology. And note that the meeting is being filmed for a live stream available on the council's website, and a recording will also be available after the meeting. Public speaking will not appear on camera. And a number of people are joining us virtually, as you've probably just noticed. So we will call them up when we need to on the screen. Thank you. So we're on to Agenda Item One, which is the minutes. Is everybody happy with the minutes from the last meeting? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? Not seeing anybody indicating. Thank you. There are no questions. And then we get on to the first real report on page 13, potential site visits. And Richard Etoff is going to introduce this.
Just to draw your attention to one of the items that is suggested there. Officers suggest a visit to the 138 to 144 Friar Street application. The reference is 221235. Just that one. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Has anybody else got any other site visits they'd like to propose? And we've still got the list of outstanding ones, but it doesn't look as though any of those are going to be subject of a site visit for the next committee meeting. But obviously, we'll let people know when these are coming forward. So thank you for that. Can we note that? And then we get on to planning appeals on page 17.
Nothing to add to this, Chair. There are no reports this time, but happy to answer any questions.
Anybody got, councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. It's not quite a question on this report, but it's certainly related because 12 months ago at this, at your PAC meeting, we had this report and there was an appeal lodged at an address in my ward, 11 White Knights Road. And the seams, looking on the Planning Inspectorate, no decision at all on that from 12 months ago. So I wondered if officers have a feeling of what is causing those delays? What's happening with the Planning Inspectorate that might be causing those? And is that a common thing at the moment?
I'm not sure we do know, Chair. There have been some issues in the past couple of years with the inspectorate. I don't know about this one particularly. We will go away and find out for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else on this? Can we note that and move on to Item Six, which is applications for prior approval?
Nothing further from officers. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody want to say anything or ask any questions? No. So can we note that then, please? And then we get to Item Seven, which is the objection to a tree preservation order on page 27. And Sarah Hudson here to introduce this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The report relates to the objection to TPO 422 relating to one cyclops tree at 24 Eldon Road. The property sits within the Eldon Square Conservation Area. Hence, any tree works requires a formal notice to be submitted to the LPA. On the 24th of June, a notice of intention to fell the Monterey cypress was received. Officers did not accept the reasons for felling as being justified and considered the tree to provide high immunity value, contributing to the conservation area. As the service of a TPO is the only way to prevent felling, once a notice has been served, a TPO was served on the 27th of July. An objection has been received from the direct neighbour at 22 Eldon Place, raising a number of concerns as detailed in 3.1 of the report. Officers' responses to those concerns are detailed in 3.2 of the report. Officers consider that a TPO is warranted and does not unduly impact on the objectors' property, with there being scope to prune to alleviate concerns. The concerns raised are therefore not considered to be sufficient to omit the tree from a TPO. Hence, the recommendation is to confirm the TPO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair. And I would like to applaud, actually, the officer's comments and the officer's recommendations on this. I find it a very sad situation that it seems that the the tree was not wanted because it was, they were living centrally near to town where there should be less trees. Now, on the other hand, quite in section 3.25, the officer does talk about the fact that these are areas where the benefits of trees can have a larger impact on more people and are needed the most, for example, for pollution filtration. I think that the officer did a wonderful job repudiating the refusal of this or the request to fell that tree. And I'd like to congratulate her, and I will refer to this, I know, again, in the future, should anyone try to provide me a ridiculous reason for felling a tree. So thank you, Chair, and thank you to the officer.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, not seeing anybody. So can we agree to confirm this TPO? Great. Thank you very much. This takes us on to the planning applications to be determined. Just to let people know that there are, Item Eight and Item Ten have got public speaking. So we will take Item Eight first, then Item Ten, and then we will deal with Item Nine at the end. Okay? Thank you. So we go straight on then to the planning application at Jessy Terrace on page 35.
Thank you, Chair. There's no update report for this item. This application seeks retrospective planning permission for the installation of UPVC replacement sash windows into the basement, first and second floor front elevation of a terrace townhouse in Jessy Terrace, which is within the Russell Street Castle Hill on Oxford Road Conservation Area, and is also covered by an Article Four direction. The direction removes permitted development rights from the owners to undertake various replacements, alterations and repairs, and planning permission is therefore needed. In this case, the owner was misadvised and the windows were installed without approval. As the report explains, in your officer's view, the windows which have been installed, although not of traditional materials, are considered to be well-made in terms of style, profile and overall appearance. And the level of harm to the heritage asset, either in terms of the conservation area, the terrace or the building of itself, is considered to be low in terms of harm to their significance in terms of the tests in the MPPF, as that there is less than substantial harm. And the public benefits also weigh in favour of the proposal, as set out in the report. The officer recommendation is therefore to approve retrospective planning permission. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We have, Evelyn Williams is here to object to the recommendation. And then we have the applicant, John Henshaw, who wishes to speak after that. So for those of you not seen this before, everybody gets five minutes to speak on their arguments. And then the committee gets an opportunity to question people if they need to. So if we could ask Evelyn to speak first and just introduce yourself and your role, and then we'll start timing the five minutes. Thank you. Hello, Evelyn, are you still there?
Yes, hello. My name's Evelyn Williams, Chair of Reading Conservation Area Advisory Committee. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunities to speak to you this evening. We'll be over the phone. So Reading CAC asked local ward councillors that this application be brought to the Planning Applications Committee for a decision. Whether this application is granted or refused, it's a very important decision for Reading Heritage and Conservation, for Reading Borough Council Planning Policy and for Reading CAC. Our objections are summarised in paragraph 4.2 of the officer's report. We have three comments to make this evening. Firstly, climate adaptation and sustainability. We do not dispute the need for climate adaptations in heritage buildings. There are a variety of ways that the thermal efficiency of the windows of 33 Jessy Terrace could have been improved, double glazed replacement windows being one option. The windows that have been restored are UPVC replacements. As noted in paragraph 4.1 of the report from the Conservation and Urban Design Officer, UPVC is not the best replacement option, with a shorter lifetime than well-maintained timber windows. Secondly, in relation to appearance, these replacements are less distinguishable from wood than some. At more than a passing glance, it is however clear that they are UPVC. And the appearance of the glazing bars show that these are two pain with an added glazing bar and not four pain windows. Please refer to the plans at the end of the officer's report. Neither are the horns on the upper sash in keeping the style and age of the property or the original windows. 33 Jessy Terrace is not a listed building. It's a building of Towns Gate Merit in a conservation area. And furthermore, Jessy Terrace is covered by an Article Four direction to protect architectural features, and an Article Four also in relation to conversion to HMOs. The bar set in terms of harm that the windows cause to the character and appearance of the property and the conservation area is not as high as for a listed building, but there is still a balance that has to be struck. Planning officers consider that the windows are acceptable and recommend approval. Thirdly, why Reading CAC disagree? UPVC windows are one of the most complained about changes in CA. They do not always replace original windows, as an old property may have gone through many iterations of modernisation of doors and windows in style and materials. Unless the building is listed or there is an Article Four direction in place, the choice is solely the owners. The Jessy Terrace Article Four does not specifically mention replacement windows among the alterations requiring planning permission, but our understanding was that it did, and this is confirmed by paragraphs 3.2 and 3.3 of the officer's report. Incorrect advice was given by a council officer and the applicant proceeded to install UPVC windows throughout the property. There was an opportunity for this to be halted and rectified, but this was not taken. As a result of the action of plastic planning officers, the applicant has less than perfect fenestration on one of the most notable houses and in one of the most notable streets in the CA. There has been a loss in the collective heritage asset of Jessy Terrace. This loss is both financial and qualitative. Officers state that each planning application is assessed individually, and if this application is approved, that precedent will not be set. We do not agree. If this application is granted, other residents in Jessy Terrace, who would like to replace their windows with UPVC of this style, even from this supplier, may decide just to go ahead without incurring the cost of a planning application. Clearly, it is unlikely that enforcement action would be taken. Beyond Jessy Terrace, there are also likely to be implications. We requested that RBC replace the windows at the front with wooden windows as compensation for the incorrect advice that was given. Reading CAC has been engaging with residents in Christchurch and Eldon Square CA in reviewing their appraisals. It is clear that deterioration in properties is a big issue, and we have advocated an Article Four to control changes which affect the character and appearance of the area. Reading residents need to have faith in the transparency of the planning implications of an Article Four and visibility of its restrictions on permitted development rights. This is currently not the case in terms of the information available on the council's website or, as we have seen in this case, advice given. As a community heritage champion, Reading CAC is very disappointed by the incorrect advice given in this case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Evelyn? Not seeing anybody indicating, so thank you very much. And then we will go on to hear from John Henshaw, who's the applicant. Do you want to take a seat and turn on the mic and then introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, John Henshaw, applicant at 33 Jessy Terrace.
Five minutes?
Perfect. Yeah, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll look to address some of the objections in a moment, but I thought it was important to just state the history and the facts of this case. So firstly, by nature, I'm quite cautious and I wanted to do my research before spending such a significant amount on the windows and wanted to do due diligence before making the purchase. So when I was originally thinking about investing in my home, trying to make it eco-friendly and carbon efficient, reducing heating bills, set about doing that research. I knew about the Article Fours on the street because I'd done the research when I purchased property in 2017. So I set about trying to understand the limitations of change in the windows. Upon research, I visited the council website, which I see is subsequently being updated based on the report recommendation. But when I visited that website, it kept referring to the Article Four saying architectural features, and then the link would take me to a document that listed out what the Article Four was and a map of the area. But it didn't say what those architectural features were. So I reached out to the council, made an official inquiry to check what was, what kind of, what was the definition of architectural features. I specifically mentioned that I lived on Jessy Terrace and that I wanted to clarify on the Article Four terms what could and couldn't be done. So as I've said, obviously, I got some advice back from the council. It was an official inquiry. It was planning inquiry FS case 368455789, if anyone wishes to check. Dear Mr. Henshaw, thank you for your inquiry. Being in an Article Four area does not stop you replacing your windows. As long as your building isn't listed or is a flat, you are able to install double glazing under permitted development rights. So I kind of asked, like, what more could I have done in my due diligence? It was a significant outlay. I've not just replaced the front, but replaced the back as well. It's a lot of money. And obviously, if I'd known, I would have applied, and I wouldn't want to have caused myself so much stress over the last couple of months. So I should also note that despite the approval from the council, I was personally conscious that I wanted to match the existing styles in the street, i.e. keeping the sash windows, although I wanted to maintain the aesthetic. And so I chose the matching style sash windows with wood effect UPVC, as I like leaving the conservation area, and I wanted the visual aspects of Jessy Terrace. Despite some of the properties, as mentioned in the reports, that have previously decided to install the cheaper double glazing non-sash style, I purchased a sash style. The lady who reported said it was two pain windows, but it is actually four pain with the astrical bars as matched the original, just for clarification, if you'd like to check. I also decided to purchase the sash windows at the rear of the property, despite, again, not needing to. According to the rules, as, again, I value the property, I want to keep in heritage, again, despite some of the houses on the street that have, again, purchased the cheaper double glazing at the back that, again, doesn't, I think, value the property and the aesthetics as much. It should also be noted that I decided against doing the French windows on the street level. Ironically now, as I didn't have the confidence that the company could match the visual aspects of the existing doors, and I didn't want to damage the aesthetic on the streets. I'd also like to state that by installing modern double glazing, I've reduced my carbon footprint in line with the Reading Climate Energy Strategy, so reducing the heat from escaping the house, reducing the heating bills, especially with a new three-month-old baby at home, that's going to be quite critical this winter. And I believe these changes will help towards Reading's target of net zero carbon dioxide emissions in the Reading area by 2030. Anyway, to continue the history of the case, I note that there was no formal complaint to the council about my windows, but I believe that tip-off came internally, I'm guessing from the Reading CAC, as discussed. Obviously, that prompted the same day turnaround from the planning enforcer to visit me, which obviously then caused me quite a lot of stress and undue. I would disagree that there wasn't an opportunity to stop partway through. That's my prerogative. I'd also like to, like it noted, that as soon as I was informed of the council mistake that I needed planning permission, that I diligently worked with Julie Williams and her team to rectify the issue, and I thank her for her time and the late night phone calls that we were on. And would like to include a comment from her at the end of our engagement, which was via email. So again, quote, "Once again, I'm very sorry for the situation we find ourselves in due to the incorrect advice provided to you, but reassure that we are working together to find a solution." Obviously, that solution being that the planning committee or planning council have recommended my application, and I hope this council also approves it too. Thank you. Welcome any questions?
Thank you very much. Has anybody got any questions? Councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Henshaw, for coming this evening. And I am extremely sorry about the stress that this has caused you because I know it has. I obviously live in your neighbourhood and am one of your Abbey Ward councillors. My question for you is about the level of research you did about eco-friendly windows because it's one of my peculiar interests. And I'm not sure if you received substantial advising about the knowledge of windows or whether even the window company advised you of the fact that UPVC windows generally have a shelf life of 25 years. I myself live in a property with 160-year-old wooden windows that are still fine. Those 20, that 25 years of a UPVC windows life then means that likely you'll have to replace that again. And did they inform you that UPVC windows are not actually recyclable? And that they go into the landfill and that they increase the landfill or not? Which does indeed actually probably possibly throw a curveball on your perceived carbon footprint because you will probably, in due course, or the person next after you, might be throwing those away. Did you uncover any of that research at all?
I, not to that level of extent. My understanding was that there'd be at least a minimum of 35 years for the lifetime. In terms of replacing them, the company didn't discuss that with me. I was more thinking heat retention for the home. That home was very drafty, very cold, especially in the winters. It regularly dropped down to 14 degrees inside. I have a four-year-old and now a three-month-old as well. So my interest was how do I make the home warmer, more secure? And obviously, then that has a knock-on effect, reducing the heat bills, which I think the biggest form of, or the biggest blocker to get the UK to carbon net zero is home insulation and reducing domestic heating bills, which I suspect this will, this will help.
Rowland?
I do have a follow-up. I couldn't agree with you more, and I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you're very serious about that. But so you'd never uncovered any facts about the fact that UPVCs go into the landfill and they're not recyclable then?
Correct, yeah. The company didn't tell me that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to ask any questions? Councillor Carnell?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for coming along to speak to us. Just for clarity, you've replaced a wooden four-pain sash window with a wood effect four-pain sash window, when you could have opted for perhaps cheaper alternative styles?
Well, I thought I could have opted for cheaper alternative styles based on the advice I was given, but I wanted to, I really liked the fact I live in a conservation area and wanted to maintain that aesthetic. And so I opted to replace like-for-like as much as I could, but obviously new double glazing instead of the, I guess, the old wooden windows.
Thank you. Like Councillor Rowland, regret the stress you've been caused by this. And I think you should be commended for trying to retain the aesthetic when you could have opted for a cheaper option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Not seeing anyone. So thank you very much for coming. And I'm, can I add my regret that you've been put through this, especially a special time for a family, new baby and everything? So thank you for coming tonight and apologies, I think, of half of the council for what you've had to go through.
Thank you very much.
Got Councillor Page indicating, and then Councillor Rowland?
Yes, Chair, thank you. This is a bit of a sorry saga. And again, I'd associate myself with the comments made earlier and thank Mr. Henshaw for taking the trouble of coming along in person. Jessy Terrace is an important island of heritage in the borough. And that's the reason we have got not one but two Article Fours in place. And the one that relates to this particular issue is the older one from 2004, which is why I find it addedly regrettable that the error was made. That error can be partly excused because if any new or any existing planning officer had tried to find the original Article Four, they would have had to have displayed Clouseau-esque ability in navigating our website, which on a good day is pretty impenetrable, but in this case is still lacking. And as of today, whilst the Article Four, the Article Fours are clearly shown very early on, when you go on to the Planning and Building Control section of our website, fourth item down, Article Four Directions. Great, you think. So you go to the, you click the link. You've then got reference to Jessy Terrace and architectural features. You carry on down. You then get to Article Four Direction Jessy Terrace, but it's only the one. It's the most recent one. Is the 2004 Article Four included on the website there? No, it is not. So even as of today, that, the most important information, is not on there. Now, I don't know where to find it. I genuinely don't know, but I was advised by my colleague, Councillor Rowland, that you can actually find it by going on to the CAC website, the Civic Society website. That is simply not satisfactory. And I would say to, and I know it's difficult in the neighbourhood. There are some neighbours who have expressed concerns, and I know Mr. Henshaw has had some letters of support from local neighbours, and these are essentially subjective issues up to a point. But in terms of public information, that is not subjective. And I'm going to propose, Chair, not as a condition to the grant of planning approval. And I don't think we have much option but to grant this evening. But I'm going to propose that we have a separate report back from officers confirming that the website has been appropriately amended so that the Article Four relating to 2004 is actually on that website, because it's not acceptable. And I would say to those residents who are concerned about the procedure that, and I speak as a former employee of the local government ombudsman some years ago, there's a clear case of bad administration because the council's admitted it. There is a problem around what injustice has been sustained. But if a local resident wanted to try and get a complaint to the local government ombudsman, they've cleared the first hurdle because the council's already admitted bad administration. Showing or trying to justify injustice would be a slightly harder one, but it may be one not without the ability of some residents to run. Because if there were finding against the local authority, that would then open up a remedy which might be at the local government ombudsman's discretion, and that can involve issues of replacement or compensation or whatever. Now, I'm not in any way prejudging it, but that's the way the procedure could run. And it is, it has been pretty lamentable, the error that was made. Because the 2004 Article Four is actually quite thorough. The interesting thing about it is that it doesn't specifically mention windows. It talks about enlargements, improvements or other alterations to a dwelling house that fronts the highway. So that's pretty comprehensive. It then gives example of roof slopes, chimneys, porches, hard surfaces, installation or replacement of a satellite antenna. Antenna. It talks about gates, fences, walls. It talks about, and the painting of the building. Now, it's strange that probably one of the most visually important elements, namely a window, isn't referenced. So one of the other things I would ask is for officers to report back on whether, without rerunning a new Article Four, there is any way that we can, in terms of A, identifying the Article Four more clearly on the website, also make it quite clear that windows are included. Because if we're talking about slopes and antennas and gates and fences, it does seem an omission from that original Article Four. So Chair, I'll leave it at that. I think we do need a report back then to the committee. This is not a condition that we attach into the planning consent. This is a separate resolution. But the belt and braces on A, getting the website sorted out, and B, the issue of referencing windows when we have that Article Four clearly there. It's not part formally of that order, but it really does need to be in big flashing lights so that any future resident doesn't have to go through the sorts of hoops and trauma so that any future resident doesn't have to go through the sorts of hoops and trauma and stre- well, I won't use trauma, stress and in his own words that Mr. Henshaw um has uh experienced. And I'm grateful, I would say, uh to Mr. Henshaw for for at least doing the due diligence that he has done. Because many of those grottier um UPVC windows that he's referred to were installed prior to two thousand and and four. They are quite old. Um, I think one actually has been installed since, but that raises separate enforcement um issues. Um, but I would put on record as well that I don't like UPVC windows in any shape or form. Uh councillor Roland has referenced one of the reasons. Um, but uh that I'll leave it at that, Chair. So if I could propose that as a separate um motion.
Thank you councillor Roland.
Thank you, Chair, and I I thank councillor Page for his comments. And and again, you know, I I really a- agree with the fact that it's a really regrettable uh circumstance that that has kind of led us to this. Uh, when the windows were installed, uh we never had such a great response to uh one of our councillor surgeries when we had six individual members of of the community uh come storming down to um, you know, get get very, very excited about this. Because people that live in that conservation area and on that street do care very much, especially on that street, do care very much about the heritage of the area. Um, they were concerned about about where this left the Article Four in the future. Uh, obviously, uh having to apply for for planning permission, should they want to do their windows? And and what kind of standards would be held? Um, so there's, there's a lot of implications that residents rightly felt about the weakening of of an area that they felt was very well protected. Uh, I will say that I don't think there is one resident on that street that would wish wish their new neighbour any any harm or any upset. I think they all feel sympathy for you, a- as do, as do I uh um on this situation. Um, I I would go a little bit further on the on the situation that councillor Page stated in asking for a a separate resolution uh in regards to what kind of reparations can be done for the community on this. Um, councillor Page did mention windows. I think I would also, I would also mention doors too, because there there have been issues with doors in the past uh that that have been turned down based on that Article uh Four from two thousand and four. What that Article Four from two thousand and four also does not do is it does not list the uh the phrases of like for like and also materiality. And materiality may be something uh that we would very much want to look into. So again, with councillor Page's comments, I would, I would suggest that we look to see without a major um rewriting of an Article Four, but to look about strengthening, strengthening that Article Four from two thousand and four and also look possibly to attach the local development order or an LDO, which we have situated in the local plan, and I made sure of that uh back when the local plan was written. Uh, so that if you are to actually, when when you use a local development order in conjunction with an Article Four, uh if someone were to replace a window, a wooden window with another wooden window, it would be like for like and therefore not even require them to uh to actually apply for planning permissions. So that's an interesting aspect that could be looked at in in an Article Four. So I I would say that that apologies are certainly due to the CAC and to the residents and to the the people in the area when an error has been made. And and it is um it it is an error that that the council has made. It is maladministration and it has unfortunately left Mr. Henshaw in the middle of a of a very um, a very uncomfortable situation that he did not intend. I will leave, I will, I will leave officers with this and and just remind them that our planning, our planning area is the are the protectors through these Article Fours of our heritage in this town. And when that falls down, you see that the the civic society, you see the Conservation Area Advisory Committee um uh become upset, you see, you see residents around it that relied on their homes being being made special and being buoyed uh in value and and just the sheer physical enjoyment of living on Jesse Terrace all let down. And and I feel um very, very badly about that. And I and I think that we owe the that that community an apology. Our conservation area, that conservation area is on the at risk register because of loss of original features. It's something that our planning department knows very well, and I do hope that in the future that 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 is a point that is not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Not seeing anyone. Can I just also, before we move to a vote, councillor? Sorry, something's gone wrong with that. Uh, you came in in the middle of this one, so I'm advised that you, you probably know that anyway, that you shouldn't vote on this particular item. Uh, right, um.
Councillor Lovelock, can I just say a word?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Julie.
Sorry, um, yeah, I obviously, um, clearly, I would like to apologize on behalf of the planning uh section, the planning service and the colleague involved uh for the wrong information being provided to Mr. Henshaw. I think it was actually last October, um, twenty twenty one, that um Mr. Henshaw made his initial inquiry about the Article Four direction. So, um, you know, and I don't think we were notified of the works taking place until July. So, uh, you know, looking back over time, if only there was another chance to have another conversation, you know, we could have reversed or prevented this situation from occurring. So, you know, I've I've got no hesitation in apologizing to both to Mr. Henshaw and to the community. You know, I know full well and and the fellow planning officers know full well the importance of Article Four Directions. Um, and since um July, uh we have been looking at, as I say councillor Page has already mentioned, that's giving more prominence to the Article Four direction. But we are also looking at, um with colleagues, um Mark Wogan's team in policy at improving, making the Article Four directions, because there's, there's, there's some applying to most wards in the borough which affect the pattern brickwork and other detailings that we need to make these more more, more, more um under easily understood by the homeowners who probably have got, haven't got a clue what Article Four actually means. And also so that the planning officers and those doing our duty um inquiries, as in this case, can also easily see what an Article Four means. And as you say, specify what it does and doesn't allow somebody to do without first granting planning permission. And so just to be clear, Article Four um have the effect of taking away what would normally be permitted development rights. And so we need to make clear exactly what is permitted or not permitted. And so, yeah, please rest assured that we are looking at improving that um on our website. And I'm happy to bring our report back to pack to explain what our proposals are. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Julie. Right, as I said, we'll take the vote in two parts, firstly on the actual application and then on councillor Page's um request for us to have an additional um recommendation which asks for that report to come back to us as soon as possible, I would suggest. So can I see all those who are in favour of granting planning permission for this application? Thank you, that's unanimous. Uh, and those in favour of the the request for a report back as soon as possible on improvements to Article Four. Thank you. That was unanimous as well. Uh, thank you. And I can I also just say again, we're really sorry you've had to go through all this. And um I hope that uh we can avoid anything like this happening for other people as a result of your very distressing experience. Thank you. And also, I think, again, to the CAC, I understand absolutely why they're really upset about this and they're right to be. So um apologies all round to everyone. Thank you very much. Takes us on, we're going to take um item ten next, which is the application in in Whitley Ward for traveller's site. Uh, and I believe that Ethne Humphries is going to introduce this report. It's on page eighty nine.
Thank you, Chair. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, thank you.
This is a council own regulation three application for a Gypsy and traveller transit site located on the south side of Island Road. The proposal comprises seven transit pitches, each with its own sanitary block, a communal play and picnic area and other onsite facilities, including a welfare office and waste and recycling facilities. The typical duration of stay would be between a minimum of one to three days and a maximum stay of three months. The first slide shows the location of the site within its wider context, alongside an aerial view of the site and the site layout. The second slide shows some site photos taken at various times in the year. The photos at the bottom of the slide look towards the site from Island Road, and the photos at the top of the slide look towards the side of the site from the recycling centre, which is located to the west of the site. As a Reading Borough Council own application, the site would be managed to protect not only the people who would occupy the site, but those members of the public who surround it. The usage would be governed by a licence setting out strict regulations on how the site is used for the temporary periods may be occupied. The site would also be supervised by a site manager to ensure that the site is kept to a high standard in the interests of all concerned, Gypsies and travellers and members of the public, providing the necessary security. As noted within the main agenda report, the site is subject to a number of constraints and designations, including its location within the functional floodplain, its siting between the recycling centre and waste treatment plant, and its location within the detailed emergency planning zone of the Atomic Weapons Establishment Burfield Site. The officer report has considered all significant aspects of the proposal and the site and has acknowledged and addressed the objections raised by consultees as well as representations made from members of the public. As acknowledged in the report, it is clear that there are policy conflicts with the proposal. However, there is policy support for the provision of Gypsy pitches at both national and local level, as well as importantly, a statutory duty for the council to provide such pitches. Specific government guidance on Gypsy and traveller sites is provided within a supporting document titled Planning Policy for Traveller Sites, which is referenced in the officer report. This document makes clear that local planning policies should identify a five year supply of deliverable sites for traveller accommodation. The document sets out that if a local authority cannot demonstrate an up to date five year supply of deliverable sites, this should be a significant material consideration in any subsequent planning decision and when considering applications for the grant of temporary consent. As evidenced within the officer report, Reading Borough Council does not currently have a transit site for Gypsies and travellers, and there is no policy in the development plan which allocates sites for Gypsy and traveller pitches. It is clear that there is a lack of a five year supply of Gypsy and traveller sites and clear that there is a significant unmet need in the borough that is unlikely to be resolved in the near future. Despite attempts to find alternatives, no other sites have come forward or have been found available. The Planning Policy for Traveller Sites document aims, amongst other things, to reduce the number of unauthorised encampments. There appears to be no identifiable prospect for several years to come of a plan led solution to reduce the use of unauthorised sites. The lack of any policy designed to bring forward new sites adds further weight in support of the proposal. The proposal, which would help to meet an identified need, would also significantly help to reduce the number of unauthorised encampments across the borough, which would be a significant benefit of the proposal that carries weight. Unauthorised encampments can be costly, time consuming and disruptive, including to communities and local businesses. Provision of a transit site within the borough would make it easier for the police to move on unauthorised encampments, utilizing powers under the Criminal Justice and Public Order Act. However, the powers available to the police are only available if there is a caravan site available elsewhere in the local authority area. The ability to use these powers in Reading is therefore currently restricted by the lack of sites. To conclude, national policy and guidance dictates that such an unmet need and the lack of available deliverable sites carry significant weight and when determining applications for temporary permissions. Having regard to the information within the officer reports, including those comments received in representation objecting to the proposal, it is considered that the factors in favour of the proposal for a transit site outweigh the acknowledged negative impacts. Members will need to consider the planning balance and the various competing issues in this case. Whilst acknowledging the level of objections raised, these have been carefully considered and assessed in the main agenda report. Officers have identified important material planning considerations that favour the application submitted. In this respect, the development proposal is considered necessary in terms of meeting the critical need for Gypsy and traveller pitches, and there is a clear lack of viable alternative sites. This weighs heavily in favour of this proposal, and in the planning balance, this critical need is considered to outweigh the various harms identified. There is an update report that provides further clarification on matters of flood risk and site allocation. The recommendation is to grant temporary planning permission for ten years, subject to the conditions set out with the main agenda report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, we have public speaking. Uh, we've got Adam Balding, uh who wants to speak against uh the proposal. And then we have Rob Shrimpton, uh who's planning consultant, and he is going to speak after Mr. Balding. We also have a number of officers uh online who um can add information if we should need it. So, Mr. Balding, welcome, thank you for coming. Would you like to just uh explain who you are and what what your interest is? And then we'll start your five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh my name is Adam. Um, I'm a resident of the Kennet Island area, um and I also sit on the resident management company. So the representation of the three thousand residents that live in uh Kennet Island. And they've asked me to come here today to represent them. So I should say that several of my opinions and elements I will say today are my own opinion and some are uh ones that have been given to me by other represent, other people in the borough.
Thank you for that. So we'll start your five minutes now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So the summary of of my objection is that two wrongs don't make a right. Um, the report details that the sole benefit of this application is that the council desperately needs it. And I think that's an appropriate word, desperate. Um, however, it also states that the reason that it needs it and all the provision should be in the aid of allowing Gypsies and travellers to get healthcare, be in the local facility to healthcare and education. The site proposed does neither of these things. The sole therefore benefit of this site is by its own admission in the report to prevent illegal encampments elsewhere and antisocial behaviour. However, those objections by the residents of Kennet Island and Green Park were considered to be potentially discriminatory if they raised them as an objection, which I find sad. If we go through the objections that the actually have been raised by residents in the local area of Kennet Island and Green Park, um it actually is far more about the environment, the ecology, the safety of the site, um the air quality, the soil. In fact, if you actually go through the full report, every element of the report says that this is an unsuitable site. It's going to be incredibly costly to build there in order to remediate just some of the things that are identified. The soil is contaminated, the air has two and a half times the amount of carbon dioxide appropriate. It is too light, too noisy, it is next to a sewage works. It is not next to any education, it is not next to any um medical facilities. Every single local business objects and every resident I've spoken to and has come forward to me is objected to the planning. I'd also like to note some of the irregularities in the planning application and the way in which it's been handled. No resident has come forward to say that they received a letter from the council about the planning application. Uh, the report does state that a considerable amount of time was given to consultation. Um, the report actually identifies multiple local businesses that would become the local amenities, such as the Longdis um and the Hudson's located within Kennet Island, as well as the uh cafe. None of those businesses were consulted, none of the residents that have come forward to us have been consulted. They were only consulted after they approached the council and were given only days for the consultation. We then reached out to local councillors, one of which is sitting on your board today, um who requested then for an extension to that consultation period. The invitation to the meeting today was only received on Monday, two days ago, with a date allocated as the seventh of September for the time of this meeting in the past. There are, there are so many things about this application that unfortunately seem to be very coincidental to the stage where residents have quite openly said to me that they don't believe that they don't believe they are a coincidence, that this is just being pushed through and that their opinions are not being listened to and nor does the council wish to listen to their opinion, that they are just so desperate to have this site somewhere in Reading that they are rubber stamping this and that they're just going to push it through. And that is sadly the opinion of the residents of Kennet Island. If you'd like me to go through some of the objections, I'm more than happy to. But the location is unsafe. AWE have opposed it. Thames Water have opposed it. Absolutely everybody who's actually formally looked at this application has said that it should not be placed where it is. And the thought and the idea that this is the only location in the whole of Reading that could possibly be this site, be the planning for this site, is, I'm sorry, laughable because in the report itself, it says that the only location that was found was actually Cow Lane. And that then after Cow Lane had an objection from Reading Festival, then the site next to the dump was proposed. I believe that if this planning were to be not granted and refused, another site would be found. I think there are far better sites in Reading for this. If you actually really care about the traveller and gypsy community and you actually want to provide them with a location where they can get healthcare, access to education, there are far better locations than next to a dump in a place that is unsafe.
Thank you. Just about on time. Thank you. Would you like to stay there and see if there's any questions from any of the committee? Anyone wish to ask any questions?
More of a comment, just to thank Mr. Balding. You know, there is a question.
A question, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hello, Adam. Yeah, I know Adam and members of PAC may recognise Mr. Balding from a previous application on Brunel Retail Park, where he put forward a representation about alarms, waste management and HGVs. We listened as a planning applications committee to try to get some mitigating conditions, as in reducing HGV traffic through Kennet Island for improved signage. We also got a condition on waste management and alarms and an informative on the latest, one that came for Brunel Retail Park. So, I value his opinion. He speaks for a lot of Kennet Island residents. I'm going to ask questions later on to the officers. And obviously, I've been contacted by residents on issues around the operations and such like. So, it's just to say, my question would be, I hope that you feel that you can come forward to your councillors and council and we do try to help where we can. And there's nothing, I think, written in email, nothing underhand about anything. It's all out in the open. You know, we are here as a planning committee to look at the report and judge it and we take advice from our planning officers. We make decisions and obviously represent the views of our residents. Okay.
It is the opinion of the local residents and I am representing their opinion in total. People, multiple people have told me that there is no point coming today that this is being pushed through and that the multiple now coincidences with administrative errors that have happened with this planning application when it comes to discussing it with the local community and consulting mean that they don't believe that there is going to be any fair. And it's sad that I have to say that. I'm very sorry that I have to report that to you.
Your next clarification.
Mentioned about Cow Lane being considered and then changed because of an objection by Reading Festival. Isn't it because there's a school going on there? Isn't it because there's a school going on there?
That was then the proposal for the site after the gypsy site was...
So, it was proposed, there was a consideration, but because it's now...
And it was rejected, yeah.
Yeah, and not just because it was objected by Reading.
But that was by the report's own admission. It was the only, it was the sole site in Reading that was found. But then after it was rejected, then the site next to the dump was found. So, again, I would just refute that the idea that's being put forward in this report that this is the only location in the entirety of Reading that this site could possibly be on and that's the only reason why therefore the planning must be granted, even though it's unsafe, is invalid.
Come back. So, would you agree that the Cow Lane site, which, you know, was considered, has been taken out of the equation because there's a school going on there?
Yes, you rejected the planning application for the Gypsy and traveller site and so now there is a school going on there. What educational facilities and healthcare does the site next to the dump plan to provide for the Gypsy and traveller community? Yeah.
Okay. councillor Roland, I think you've got a question.
Right, mine's a follow-up from councillor Ennis. You're, I guess, expressing concern that there couldn't be any other possible or that there's got to be other possible sites. But in all of your research and the research of the committee and residents, were they not aware of the report that actually was in our update pack today? The link was given for that of the report from 2017 that specifically reviews all eighty of those sites and then shows, and some, whether they were viable or not, it's a very long-ranging report. Did you all actually take a look at that report and come to understand why we are where we are today?
No, no reports have been sent to any resident that has spoken to me. I have personally not seen that report. I have requested it and have not found it. It was one of my questions as to how enough can eighty sites really, a location that is unsafe and unfit actually be the only option? And I was unable to find that.
It's on the website and is a publicly available document that, because, as I'm sure you're aware, I mean, this has been going on for an awfully long time. So, it's a pretty available report that you could probably fairly easily find. So, I'm very sorry that you didn't have the opportunity to see that. Yeah.
I would consider my IT skills above that of the average person. I would say that I work in regulation and other areas with considerable documentation and works with governments and I have not found it. So, it is not easy to find and no resident has come forward to say that they have found it. They have looked for it and so have I.
councillor Lane.
Yeah, Mr. Balding. Obviously, I know you have quite a good relationship with my colleague councillor Eden. And obviously, I've attended meetings with the local police with you and worked with you quite well. I understand because I sit on the planning applications committee, you may not come forward to me first, but you've been in contact with councillor Eden. Did you at any time ask councillor Eden for any information, residents, on these eighty sites or previous?
Not on the eighty sites. We did, however, come forward to ask for her help with extending the consultation period and asking why we were only given a matter of days and why no one had been consulted. And she gave us help where she could. Unfortunately, the, sorry, I shouldn't say unfortunately. Unfortunately, the primary help actually came from ALARC or the local MP. So, every resident of Kennet Island, while they didn't receive any information from a Labour councillor or a Reading Borough Council, did receive a letter from the Conservative Party offering help.
Yeah, local MP, stating a statutory consultation, you know, as with every other planning application. It'd be difficult, to be honest. You know, I live in Whitley as well. It'd be difficult to not know that that application was going ahead. I was asked many questions on it, you know, and I asked them, you know, honest answers. I gave honest answers. And, you know, we do try and represent... Oh, the question is, would you not agree that we do try and be as open and as fair as possible and represent our residents to the best of our abilities?
In my workings with the council in the past, I would agree. I always believed that it's far better to work with people than against them. So, I've worked with the council for many things, including actually the, was what I'm calling it, the Gillette Park, the Basingstoke Road development where we put in park benches etcetera with my workplace. I prefer to work in a positive manner. In this particular application, I do not believe that that is the case. Any, every single one of the businesses that was named in the report as being the local amenities has not actually been contacted by the council until they approached them. And if the three businesses that are named have not been contacted and no resident has come forward to me to say they've been contacted, it just looks, it looks bad.
I'm not seeing anybody else wanting to ask you a question. So, thank you very much for your time, Mr. Balding. And we'll ask Rob Shrimpton, a planning consultant, for the applicant to come forward and give us five minutes. But I'm just mindful that councillor Carnell has left the room and he ought to hear, if he's to take part in the vote, he ought to hear what Mr. Shrimpton's got to say. Right. Do you think, well, I'm happy to wait for a minute or two, but I'm not going to wait for ages, so frankly. You can't just walk in and out of a meeting like this, I'm afraid. Sorry about this. councillor Emberson.
Yeah, Chair, I don't recall ever being told off for going to the toilet before. I don't know if this is in our standing orders. I know members of the committee have previously had to depart for a brief moment. I appreciate the pause, but I just, we've never had this raised.
No, but I suppose in fairness, if he doesn't hear what the applicant's got to say, it's very difficult to make the judgment. But I'm going to give him another minute and then hope they'll both be back.
...is currently unavailable.
There's some officers who aren't apparently online. Is he coming, councillor Robinson? Facilities? Well, I think before the next meeting councillor Emberson has a point. We need to get some clarification around this. But I do also take the very real point that if members don't hear, both sides of, particularly when we've got members of the public or the applicant wishing to speak, they should hear both of it. He's outside having a, is he? He's probably outside having a cigarette. Probably normally is. This is ridiculous. Right. councillor Carnell, we have waited for you, but we're going to give some clarification before the next meeting about popping in and out of meetings because if you miss key bits of the report or indeed particularly when we've got members of the public and the applicant speaking, it's important that you are hearing both sides of the arguments. So, we'll send some clarification round before the next meeting. So, let's, we've got Rob Shrimpton here, who's, sorry, Shrimpton here, who's the planning consultant. We also have other representatives of the applicant online who can answer specific questions if need be. So, if you'd like to just explain your role and then we'll start timing your five minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Rob Shrimpton. I'm a planning consultant. So, I've been helping manage the planning application process. And we have a couple of my colleagues online who will be able to answer the detailed technical questions that I'm not able to.
Thank you.
I'll go closer to it.
Is that better?
Yeah, is that okay? Good.
I think that's better. Thank you. So, we're just about to start the five minutes. Over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. The applicant, Reading Borough Council, have been through a lengthy process to establish the need for a Gypsy and traveller transit site and an extensive site search process that culminated in the selection of the application site. Assessing the housing needs of people living in caravans or houseboats is a requirement for local housing authorities under the Housing and Planning Act, National Planning Guidance and the Local Plan. Reading Borough Council therefore commissioned a Gypsy and traveller accommodation assessment in June 2017. And with the great respect of the previous speaker, I found that when I Googled it, it came up as the first hit, that identified a need for up to seventeen permanent pitches and five transit pitches. So, that's five transit pitches is ten caravans. Without formal provision, unauthorised encampments appear and there were actually eighty-seven in the year that the study was published, 2017, which caused, of course, issues for residents, the council, the police and importantly, for the travelling community themselves. The council undertook a lengthy search for sites to meet this need. Consultations on the local plan issues and options in January 2016 and again on the draft local plan in May 2017 asked for sites, but none were forthcoming. The council even took the step of writing directly to owners of all identified development sites to ask them to make provision, but again, none were forthcoming. A list of around eighty council own sites was therefore drawn up. Each site was thoroughly assessed, after which only one was identified as having potential, which was previously discussed at Cow Lane. But after further work, it was dismissed because it was used for the Reading Festival and, as we talk about, had a proposal for a school or subsequently was identified for a school. A further review of the sites was therefore undertaken, which identified the application site and is therefore the culmination of an exhaustive search. The proposal includes seven pitches separated by privacy screens and each with its own amenity block, has a bin store, play area, picnic area and landscaping. The site's separated from residential areas, the nearest being over a hundred metres to the north-west and over three hundred metres to the east on Kennet Island on the other side of the A33, but also within walking distance of shops, amenities and public transport. The site's been subject to detailed assessment and the Officer Report explains how all the technical issues have been addressed. Residential development standards have been applied, even though the caravans, of course, not permanent. Robust management procedures would be in place. For example, because the site falls at the edge of the extended emergency planning zone around the atomic weapons facility at Burfield, there'll be a management plan, spaces for families to stay put for forty-eight hours, a specific officer to manage the site and a site office in the unlikely event of a problem. And this, of course, is bearing in mind that those using the site might otherwise be in illegal encampments where there's no such precautions. A similar management plan will be in place in case of flooding. Boundary walls will limit impacts from neighbouring uses. Again, bearing in mind that those staying here will be temporary and not permanent. With respect for the request that members support the officer recommendation in grant planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to stay there. There may well be some questions. councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for coming and talking to us this evening. I've got two questions if I may. I'll fire them both at you and then, yeah, take them whatever order you want. The first is the size. If I've read it correctly, there are seven pitches, each taking two vans and two cars. As you probably know, the most recent unauthorised encampment in Palmer Park over where I live, I think accounted in excess of thirty vans plus associated vehicles. Given that that seems a lot more common now, that the size of the encampment will be well in excess of fourteen vans on a regular basis, how does this site intend to cope with that large volume of vans and cars potentially turning up in Reading? That's my first question, size. The second question is, we've heard from an objective that perhaps local residents don't feel they were well consulted. Can you tell me what consultation was done with the travelling community to understand their needs? Thank you.
In response to the first answer, the first question rather, we're restricted by the size of the site and what can be accommodated on it. So, we've tried to get as much on there as possible. You know, there's more space, I don't know if you have the site layout there? You can see it in the corner there. So, it has amenity areas, bin stores, picnic area. So, that, of course, improves the amenity of the site, makes it a better site to be, but of course reduces the number... but of course reduces the number of vehicles you can get onto it. But that is the maximum that could be accommodated on the, on the site. I said previously that the, I mean, it does meet, according to the assessment that was done, 90% of the need for transit sites. So I appreciate that there are, it may well, in your example, there are more people there than was suggested. But through the assessment that was undertaken, it said this would, this would meet 90% of that need. In terms of consulting with the Gypsyian traveller community themselves, there's actually an officer at the council who engages with them, because as you can imagine, they're quite a hard to reach community. They don't, I mean, things as such as the concept of land ownership are not part of their cultural approach. So they have been consulted. This is a, through that specific officer. This is a site that they've used in the past. The reality is that they would prefer a permanent site. They have an attachment to Reading. There's a historic, I didn't know this until I was told, but there's a historic attachment to Reading because the, in the past, the, the hospital's been very welcoming of Gypsies. So lots of people have been born there and the community, although they move around, like to come back to where they were born. So as a result, there's been, people feel, attract, an attachment to an area and their generations go through it. So they would, in all honesty, prefer permanent sites. But I suppose this is, you know, this is a step towards that.
Thank you very much. Could I, one quick follow-up, Chair? The assessment that was undertaken regarding need and size, was, was that, how many years ago was that now?
2017, so it's already a little while ago, yeah.
Okay, councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm just wondering, what would be, and I don't know whether you would be able to answer this, or whether it's a question for the officers, but I'll ask it now and then it can be addressed accordingly. It's seven pitches, and as councillor Williams was saying, a lot of the encampments we've had in, across the last year have been more than seven pitches worth of stuff. What happens if the permanent site gets filled up and we still got issues? What, what are the next steps? Because obviously we've, we've referred to the fact the police will have extra powers if the permanent site is full. Are those powers no longer relevant? I, I don't know. Thank you.
I'll just remind you, though, it is not a permanent site, it's a transit site. Yes, do you want to respond to that? Thank you.
Yeah, quite. Well, yes, it's a, it's a permanent transit site. I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if Darren, who is online, knows.
Darren, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Did you, you heard the question?
Yes, yes, I did. What I would say in, in response to that question is that the, the sort of the medium term plan and a short term plan, so the short term plan was to look for a transit site. As part of the assessment in terms of Gypsyian travellers, we would also be looking for a permanent site over the long term. So this is kind of a medium position, is provide that transit site within Reading Borough. And we're working with our authorities surrounding Reading to work with them over, or down to pitches as well.
Councillor Lang, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you for your representation. It was more, if it's, if it does get passed tonight, it's about an operational thing, really. It states in 6.2, 620, page 104, that there'd be an onsite officer. And it was, it was to do with the, the booking as well, you know, if people roll up, how do they, how do they book? Who do they, who do they get hold of? How are fees collected? If you, it states that you're going to have a, I think, one liaison officer. But, you know, if it's a 24 hour a day operation, which it would be, that would be three shifts, that's three officers. You know, you know, how is this gonna, is it guaranteed to be 24 hours onsite? I'm not just talking about security, I'm talking about liaison officers. You said there was, there was one liaison officer. How are we going to stretch that so it becomes a 24 hour side?
I said, there is currently one liaison officer. I understand the plan is to expand that role so that it can be managed 24 hours. There is a condition requiring that plan, so there's a condition that require a detailed management plan, which will set out exactly how all of that is delivered. Because as you can imagine, often at the planning application stage, not all, not all details have been worked through. But that was, that's the intention, and then, like I say, the condition secures that. And again, I don't know if Darren or Shreeta have any comments on that.
Darren, are you with us?
Hello again, sorry, a bit of a lag there. Yes, I think we're committed in, in terms of housing, so Zouder is committed as the Assistant Director of the Housing and Communities to ensure that there's an appropriate level of management on the site in order to make sure that the, the Gypsyian traveller community have an opportunity to engage with an officer in terms of services, but also in terms of how the site is managed. So yes, we're committed to providing whatever is required to make the site work.
Councillor Lang, you want to come back, yeah?
So just to clarify, there's 24 hour a day onsite officer, liaison officer?
Yes, if that is, if that's what's required.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I'm not seeing anybody else. So if there are, oh, councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know whether you're the, the right person to ask on this one. Calling it a transit site, does that mean that once a permanent location is found, that the transit site would be closed at that point? And secondly, I have real concerns over safety. And I'm talking about, you know, the traveller community normally have young kids. Yes, there's a proposed playground and what have you, but access to healthcare, where is the nearest healthcare? Looking at, you know, what it says about the, the closeness of facilities, you know, it says, going by the normal guidelines, 400 metre walking distance. This is a five minute walk, which tends to be used to gauge accessibility on foot to bus stops and local services. The site is approximately 600 metres from facilities in the centre of Kennet Island. Does that include education or does that include healthcare? From my understanding, it doesn't. So I'd like to understand from a, you know, from a perspective in terms of what exactly are the facilities that the residents of this transit site will actually benefit from, from that, from being in that location? And also bearing in mind that the A3, which separates Kennet Island from this particular site, is a very busy road and it's fast. And if you've got young kids in, in the proximity, there might be serious concerns over their welfare.
Well, the first part of the question was whether, if the permanent site were open, this would be closed. And that wouldn't be the case. This would remain in place as a transit site. So there's a need for, for both. In terms of facilities, of course, having a, a fixed transit site, even if it's only used in transit, allows people to get used to the local area and understand what's in the local area. There is a school within a kilometres walk on, in Kennet Island. Centre of Kennet Island has a number of shops. I don't know, I'm afraid, if there's a doctor's surgery there. But I mean, there will be, or it's obviously, there's a large residential hinterland there.
Sorry, not seeing anyone else indicating, so I thank you very much for, for joining us. And then we'll be moving on to the discussion in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Page, are you indicating, yeah?
Yes, Chair. Can I thank the officers for a very thorough and comprehensive report? I've been involved with the search and discussions around the search for sites, both permanent and transit now, for coming on to 25 years on the authority. And I would just make the point to, through you, to councillor Robinson, he's clearly not read the report, but we are required to provide both permanent and transit sites. That is a legal requirement on all local authorities. The search for a permanent site continues, but as is recognised in our local plan and was accepted by the inspector only a few, what, three years ago, the chance of providing an adequate permanent site, much larger than the transit site that's required, would mean that we would be looking for a site outside the borough in cooperation with adjoining authorities. Adjoining authorities of the Blue Tinge, councillor Robinson, have been completely resistant to fulfilling their legal obligations on either front and certainly incorporating with us. And I repeat on the record, our request to both Wokingham and West Berkshire, join with us, we will pay our fair share if you are willing to work with us on providing a permanent site close to Reading, but certainly not within the Reading boundaries for the reasons that we all understand. So the permanent site still has to be delivered, but this is a focus on a transit site, which is smaller because of the assessment process. And the needs for that are set out in the report. Again, it's a legal duty on local authorities. Most of them shirk it and run away from it. And I can understand up to a point why. These are difficult issues and whatever site you propose is going to face a level of local resistance. And this council has gone through a very exhaustive process and exhausting process, where we've looked at over 80 sites in our own, on our own land. And page, I think, 129, that penultimate paragraph, Mark Waringham, in his excellent submission, refers to the identification of 80 sites that we did for further assessment. That's a public document, it's on the website, and the assessment for each site is spelt out and the reasoning for not proceeding with those. A large number of them were on sites that were landlocked or very close to existing residential developments. We did identify the preferred site, as has been referred to earlier, at Cow Lane. Essentially, it wasn't the Reading Festival objection that prevented that going forward. It was the overwhelming need for us as an educational authority to provide a new secondary school. And I defy anybody to say that, given the, the need for a transit site and the need for a secondary school, both of which are legal obligations, the latter, namely the need for a school, clearly trumped that site. And then we didn't just abandon things, we went back to the drawing board. We're not quite to the drawing board, because in that earlier assessment, this site had been shown as a high candidate, a candidate high up the list for further work, which is what's happened. And that's why this site has come forward. I do find unfortunate the description of the location of it as being next to a dump is completely inappropriate. The RE3 recycling site, through you, is one of the best-run facilities in the country and is certainly not a dump. The, the site is well-run and there will be need for further discussions with both RE3 at the, for their site and Thames Water, should this application be given consent. I'll come on to the conditions issue in, in a couple of minutes. So the, the need for the site is a legal need because we have that duty to provide permanent and transit pitches. And it's worth emphasising, this is a transit site, through you to councillor Robinson. This is not a permanent site. They will be there for between one and three days and a maximum of three months. I would suggest that, that certainly the experience elsewhere in the country is that the stay would probably be of a week or two. And for obvious reasons, this is a transit site. That is the description. People are passing through. They are in transit. And therefore, the facilities that are being provided are actually well above the standard of many other transit sites, which are literally a gate and a site with perhaps a toilet block, but nothing like the, the standard that's being offered here. And the, the need for that site is spelt out, if you turn to page 101, you've got the key paragraphs on that page, already been referred to by the officer in the introduction. The provision of a transit site triggers the ability of the local police to be able to use powers that they currently cannot use. And whereas a permanent site can be located outside the borough, a transit site has to be located within the borough. Again, the law requires that. And that's spelt out at the end of paragraph 6.9. So we don't have the luxury of sharing a transit site with Wokingham or West Berkshire in their area because it simply would not fulfil that statutory duty, which then allows the police to deploy their powers. It's a bit of a red herring, the issue of the number of caravans, because in most of the encampments that we have experienced, those are separate groups. There are very few local traveller groups that travel en masse with 30 caravans. These are people meeting up. And the availability of the transit site is the, gives the police their powers. And I would suggest, although there's no way of quantifying that at this stage, that the existence of the transit site and the fact that the police will therefore have those expedited powers is likely to deter unauthorized incursions. Because the travelling community committing those offences will be aware of the existence of that site. But that's conjecture. We can't prove it at this stage until we have the, the transit site. So the need for it is clearly there and it's a specific provision. And I, I think the issue of, of equalities is addressed in that following paragraph in 6.10, that it's an unusual condition in the planning consent to ensure that the sites are made available for a specific group. But that point is, is made clear and addressed in paragraph 6.10. Should we, as I hope we will do, grant planning permission? The issue of funding the site, there will be probably savings to the authority in, in clear up costs, but we will also be applying to central government for support in, in, in taking forward the, the development of the site. The issue of the adjoining sites is a very valid one. No site is going to be perfect and there is much work still to be done. And the representative for the Borough Council made that clear. And in terms of the site itself, in terms of landscaping, ecological mitigation, site management, which my colleague councillor Ling has already touched on, all of those are pre commencement conditions, i.e. the work has to be done and signed off before the, the works, before the site can be opened. And, and I would suggest, Chair, that in view of the importance and the sensitivity surrounding this application, the issues to deal with landscaping, the ecological mitigation, the site management plan and the boundary treatment should be brought back to this committee for full and final approval. I think in terms of transparency and in terms of satisfying ourselves about something that is controversial. Some of the objections have substance, others are, I would suggest, a bit exaggerated. But nonetheless, it is entirely legitimate for us to request that that should be brought back to the committee. And the other point that I would make relates to the, the issue of, of healthcare. This, again, it relates to the, the, the fact this is a transit site. This, again, it relates to the, the, the fact this is a transit site. The issue of facilities is addressed on page one hundred and five. And the conclusion in the appraisal is one that I agree with. Given that Gypsy and Traveller Sites are frequently located in quite isolated locations, and they are in most parts of the country, it's considered that this represents comparatively good accessibility by choice of means of travel. And again, this is not a permanent site. So the issue of healthcare, in the sense of that which would be required or perhaps should be closer for a permanent site, doesn't arise here. But the site, the issue of site management is of course important. And officers have certainly flagged up in paragraph six point twenty that that is an issue that they feel needs to be addressed. And again, that's why the site management plan should come back to us for, for, for sign-off. So in conclusion, Chair, I think that whilst this site obviously has aroused a certain amount of objection, it is located in an area that is relatively central and accessible. It's not the A3, by the way, it's the A thirty-three. But the, the, the site has, offers, I think, a good standard of provision. And indeed, if one were to dispense with some of the picnic area, for example, one could get more sites, more pitches on, but I'm not suggesting we do. And I think it's appropriate that that level of standard should be included. But the site itself is on balance, I think, suitable for this. We have had a long search and an exhaustive search. Nobody can criticise us for the lack of effort that we've put into identifying other sites, Chair. And I would, I would say to anybody who feels that there are better sites, go back to that report and come back and say that there are other sites that you believe are better than this. There are not. And on that basis, Chair, I would propose that we grant consent and that we ask for those pre-commencement issues to come back to us for final sign-off. There may be other elements that, that colleagues want to add, but I think the core ones are conditions, I'm just looking at page eighty-nine, twelve, thirteen, fifteen and eighteen. But I might have missed one, but I would so move, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, I think you are indicating next.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'll say a little bit less than councillor Page. But I would like to echo his thanks to officers, because I think it is an excellent report because it's clear, it's concise, it draws out the pros and cons. It doesn't shy away from, I think, as councillor Page said way back at the beginning, that it is a difficult decision and I think the report outlines that very well for members. So thank you to officers. A few words from me, I guess, there, there's no point pretending that this site isn't needed, but there's also no point pretending it's not disappointing. For all the reasons spelled out in the report, it damages a green link, loses trees from the borough, results in a loss of biodiversity, replaced by concrete. It homes a legally recognised ethnic group in, for a temporary period just next to a sewage works and a tip. It's far from perfect. And it, it, it doesn't appear that that much consultation has been undertaken with the travelling community themselves, possibly because of the difficulties of doing that. And it doesn't appear, certainly from what councillor Page said, that our local authorities, that our neighbours to us are really talking and are really helping and are really trying to engage with this issue, they should be. I don't think anyone's going to claim that we don't need a good quality transit site. I'm not convinced this is it. But like planning officers in the report, I can accept this because it's temporary. So permission will be for ten years from the point at which it is granted. And I sincerely hope, and I, and I'm sure councillor Page was expressing this as well, that those ten years are spent consulting with our neighbours, getting them to the table, having that discussion and that consultation and further consultation with the travelling community, wherever that's possible. We might not all be on the planning committee in ten, oh, well, councillor Page will be. The rest of us might not be on the committee in ten years' time. But if this site isn't used or if it's replaced by something significantly better in that time, then I hope that the site is fully returned to its former condition after that period, if it's no longer in use, the trees, the green link, the biodiversity and all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Ling, you are next.
Yeah, I mean, as a ward councillor, it's been quite, quite a difficult one for me. And on balance, I'm coming down to support it, it's a statutory obligation. It's a, it's a critical need of it. And as councillor Page says, I'll use less verbiage, I think, there's Tony. And I would also like to see the air quality added to, air quality monitoring added to the pre-commencement conditions, maybe some mobile monitoring or something like that. And yeah, I, I, I am going to mention some of the objections. I mean, we have, we do have unofficial sites, so to speak. And many, you know, quite a few, in Whitely, we had quite a large one on Basingstoke Road. And we've recently had three in the past year on Acre Road, you know, which is relatively close to the Circle, Circle Hospital. You know, I didn't notice any patients leaving or people leaving, leaving their jobs. And I, I did have a cousin that actually, that actually works there. I mean, well, just another quick point, I've never read up so much on detailed emergency planning areas and I've even started to take into reading the AWE liaison committee minutes and such like, which will be coming to Sept, I think, in, in, in November. I'll also say about the emergency planning area, my mum, God bless her, she lives close to one and she, in fact, lives in a, a mobile home. And it's a posh one with a jacuzzi and all that, but all the same, it's, yeah, I think she does fall into that area. So it's a much-needed service that we need to provide the travelling community. But I do recognise the, the issues raised by, by residents and businesses, hence why the site management is so important, air quality. I recognise, I actually think the facility is quite good, by the way. And I also recognise, Tony, that some people still call it a dump. But it's not, no, but it's not, but you know, people reference it as a, as a dump, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Horsby-Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to re-echo a lot of the points made by councillor Page and add a couple more. I think the key point in the report, as far as I'm concerned, is in section seven one, where it says the determination of all planning applications requires a balancing of material considerations and often competing policy requirements and objectives. That's very clearly the case here. Clearly, this site is not a panacea. It's, it's a medium-term position, but we will improve the situation locally. And we can look forward to trying to work with other councils to try and find a permanent site. One of the things in terms of weighing up, weighing the, the different competing policy areas is that this is a transit site with, it's one to three days ideally of, of the time that people will stay there. So that weighs to me, in, in terms of consideration of access to, to things like local facilities. And there's a sort of conflict, because if you put it really close to local facilities and local housing, then you'll have an increase in the level of objections from, from other, for, for other reasons. I think the council has quite clearly gone out of its way to, to follow a sequential test in, in determining this site. It, it's selected a site which is as far away as possible from residential development. And if, obviously, it's going to be, it's going to be closest to someone within the borough because the borough's boundaries are so confined. So although it's three hundred metres to Kennet Island, I, I think that's, that's a reasonable distance to, to think about. Additionally, no alternative site has been put forward and nothing, nothing that's reasonable. So some of these objections are saying, we don't want this site, but there's nothing coming forward and there is a need for this site. And as councillor Page said, also a statutory responsibility. Some of the, some of the objections seem to me to be, to be quite unfair in many ways. The Thames Water one is, is the one that I'm going to pick up on. Seems to be based on their own inability to invest in appropriate deodorant measures despite paying huge dividends to, to their, and bonuses to, to their chief officers. So I welcome their intention to, to work to improve this. And if this, that's a cat, this site is a catalyst in order to do that, that's very welcome. I also welcome a lot of the mitigating measures that have seemed to be incorporated within this application. So the landscaping is designed to, to, and we'll need more details on this, to, to avoid the intrusion of light onto the site. The emergency management measures are, are very welcome. I do have a question, which is, if any, it says in the report in section six sixty on page one hundred and twelve, that there's, there's, there's a potential issue with disabled access to toilets. And I wonder whether something can be done within the current framework of, of the development to mitigate that, perhaps tailing one of the units, tailoring one of the units or something along those lines. So the, the, the main thing that, that I'm concerned about here, or one of the main things, is also that this site represents an opportunity. It's, it's all about relative costs and inconvenience, not only to residents but also to the travellers themselves, of, of these unauthorised encampments. If we can deal with that by providing, at least in some, some way with, with this, then I think that is a good thing. And it also will help in terms of cleaning up costs after, after unauthorised encampments. There's a further question that I have to ask, which is, relates to page ninety-three. It talks about one of the plots being a single family group per pitch. Now, that concerns me because I would want to ensure that the wording there does not predicate against there being two different family groups on a single pitch. Because we don't want to find ourselves in the position of losing one of those fourteen caravan places because two of the places, two of the people are not related as a family group. So I'd just like that element to be clarified, so that it is two caravans per pitch, regardless of whether they're members of, of the family group. But for all the reasons that councillor Page has set out, I'm very much in favour of this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else that would, I wonder if officers would like to pick up on the questions that have just been asked, but also on other matters that have been raised by members.
I think there might be one or two areas, yes, please, Chair. Can we have the case officers come back and I'll, I'll pick up anything else, if that's okay? Thank you.
Eddy Humphries, would you like to just respond to those bits that you are able to, in particular the questions?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to, to give some clarification on some of the points raised, starting with the, the consultation process. From the, the planning consultation process side of things, that this has been undertaken in line with Reading Borough Council consultation procedures. It was unfortunate, the, the date of the committee meeting was erroneous, but I understand that this was rectified. The, the update report, I, I hope has given some clarification on the site allocation in terms of the comments raised about the Cow, Cow Lane site and why that was ultimately not, not available, not deliverable. In terms of the, the, the healthcare and the education facilities, the site's not considered to be badly located. It is considered to be relatively close to the town centre. It's not too far from the Royal Berkshire Hospital. But importantly, that comes back to the, the use of the site as a, a transit site and that sort of temporary period of time. That the site's not considered to be notably less accessible than other parts of Reading Borough. It's not considered to be in a remote part of the, of the borough in that sense. I think, I think it can be agreed that this has been a, a, you know, a difficult process, an exhaustive, exhaustive process for the site identification. And it's a difficult application. And I think if there was a robust set of sites available and deliverable and a demonstrated five-year supply of such sites, then this would likely be a different discussion. But it does, it comes down to this critical need for such a site, for a transit site such as that proposed. In terms of the question about the disabled unit, we, of having a disabled unit, we could potentially look at sort of securing such through condition, but this could be constrained by the size of, for example, the toilet blocks and whether they'd be big enough that there could be some problems requiring it to either contain facilities that are not large enough to contain or whether a larger building is, is required on, on what's already a constrained site. But this is something that we could, could look at. And in terms of the, the other pre-commencement conditions, these can of course be brought back to the planning committee for, for that review. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Horsby-Smith, do you still got a question needs answering, yes?
Yes, I, I did. It was about the two caravans and, and the family issue. Do the, I want to make sure that we get full use of the site, I think, if, if it's going to be approved, rather than it implying that some people can, can refuse to use the second part of the pitch because they're not related to a single family group, which is slightly implied on pages, page ninety-three. I just wanted that clarifying, that that is not going to be the case.
Eddy?
Yes, sorry, apologies, I missed that question. Yes, we, we could say that two caravans per pitch is, is appropriate regardless of, of the group. That can be required and will ultimately be for the owner and operator. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Richard Etoff wanted to come in as well with a few points.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, to, just to sort of clarify conditions really, that, just to, just to pick up on some of the discussions we've had. Councillor Page was suggesting that certain levels of detail come back to the committee. Just wanted to be absolutely clear on this. It looks to be condition twelve, the landscaping plan. Condition thirteen, the ecological plan. Condition eighteen, which is the boundary plan. Following the discussion and the points, yes, fifteen. I, I was, I was just, just coming on to this because, that's all right, that councillor Ling was, was making regarding the sort of twenty-four hour coverage of, of the site and the site management plan. As, as councillor Page has rightly said, that would be condition fifteen. I suggest we put that into condition fifteen, so that we, we, we're just clear about that. Councillor Williams was making the, the points about the, the potential remediation of the site. Obviously, to get the site to, to its condition suitable for this use, you may have noticed from the, from the plans as shown on the agenda, there's a fair bit of engineering works to be done. Question is whether, whether those works would all need to be undone at the end of the application period, the temporary period. Condition two at the moment talks about site decommissioning. What I would suggest is you might not want at this point to prejudice how you might feel at the end of that period. Now, I, I know we're talking about nine or ten years hence, but what I, what I would suggest, what I would suggest, and I've just discussed with legal colleague, is, is that perhaps we can put an informative on that says that that would also come back to this committee as well. Because then you'd be able to decide what you think was an appropriate decommissioning or reconstructive remediation scheme at that time for, for this committee. I heard the comments on the, on the disabled access and understand those points. Yes, those, those buildings are going to be very small. It's possible some works could be done to one of them. You're not going to be able to make the buildings any bigger, but you might be able to make the doorways bigger, concentrate on the thresholds, put a ramp in there, that sort of thing. So perhaps we can add an extra condition on that. I heard the points about the family, family group. Yes, that would be really covered by the, the site rules and the management plan. So I think those are the things I wanted to cover.
I think the only other thing is councillor Ling mentioned monitoring air quality.
I'm sorry, I missed that point. Can I, can I have it again?
Do you want to repeat what you said?
I suppose it depends if you mean as part of this application, councillor Lang. Obviously, we have monitoring stations in place, I'm sure, already along A33. Was your main concern to do with the road or the sewage treatment works particularly?
Operational, site-specific monitoring of air quality.
Perhaps we could have that back as part of the, what it's possible to monitor as part of the report back on the management of the site and so on.
Are we talking about the reception of air quality at the site?
Yes, I mean, if it's been raised by residents that they're concerned about the air quality near the R3 recycling centre and the sewage works, if they're smelling the odours on Green Park and such like and Kennet Island, it's relevant to the people that will be staying on the site. So it's a management thing, isn't it? Operational. I would think that if, you know, if there's bad odours there, then they need to be controlled, you know, by who? Is another point.
And I would suggest it might be wider than the site because clearly it's affecting other residents in that area.
But it's linked. I'm on about if we've got dwellings close to that site, you know, where the odours are coming from, this may, as councillor Smith said, we could use this to control that as well and improve things for residents. You know, because it's about quality of life for the people that stay in there.
Well, in response to that, I think we need to be clear on what we need to do in terms of this application. The issue seemed to be mostly the R3 site, I think, as the report explains, is reasonably contained. And I don't have concerns from the environmental protection team of the odours from that facility. We are aware that there is an issue with the sewage treatment works. That was designed to be a contained facility when it opened in around 2005. And it's evident that the operator, even though they have been an objector to this application, has not been undertaking their maintenance as they should have been. Now, that is an issue for our environmental protection colleagues. They are on the case with the operator at the moment and that is being sorted out. And we understand that that is meant that the need for formal action against Thames Water is not being considered at this time. Obviously, that's an option that's still open to them to serve some sort of abatement notice if they don't do what they're meant to do. Regarding what we receive at this site, I think we can probably put under the site management plan. That would probably cover what occupants should do at times of odour. Because as the report says, there may be times at the moment where there may be odours from the sewage treatment works. And that's probably, again, part of this welfare officer that we want to be on site to make sure the quality of life of those people is as good as it should be.
Just picking up on that, whilst we obviously can't require the applicant for this site, namely the Borough Council, to address, to deal with the actual odour suppression issues, is it possible for us to ask when the pre-commencement conditions come back about the site management, that we also have an update report from our environmental protection team that updates us on where we are with, or where Thames Water are and where we are therefore in terms of the improvements? Because there is that email right at the back that lists the deficiencies. And clearly, it's not, we can't require, we can't put a condition on, but we can ask at the time we consider this wider site management for an update from environmental protection, our environmental protection people to update us. Because on page 122, there's all that list of following council officers' investigation. These actions have been taken and some are still pending. And it would be appropriate then to have an update about that. So could I propose that as a sort of an informative to ourselves or whatever, that we ask for that?
I think so, either as part of that submission or an information item to the relevant committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, is there anything else that we've missed that needs to go into the report back? Don't think so. I think we've captured everything now. So can I, I mean, this is a difficult decision, I think, for all of us. And we all wish there was a site somewhere in the borough that ticked all the boxes. But that is not going to happen. Councillor Page has done a lot more work on this than I have, but I can remember us poring through those lists of sites. And there was clear reasons why the vast majority of them were in no way suitable. We've heard about Richfield Avenue needing to become a school. This is the only site that's been identified and we have a duty. And it may not solve all the incursion problems, but it will certainly go some way to help. And I think that's absolutely right. We need to keep pressing neighbouring authorities to work with us on finding the permanent site. And I hope the government, whatever that may be, in the near future will perhaps do a bit of strong-arming of local authorities to meet their obligations. Well, quite. So yeah, we need to keep that high up on the agenda as well. So can I, oh, councillor Robinson?
Yeah, sorry, I just had one more question, if I may. Page 112, item 6.63, contaminated land. Says the ground investigation report identifies contaminants at the application site. Then a little bit further along, it says about the fact that there is a definite need for a remediation strategy, but it says to be done. Firstly, do we have any understanding as to what these contaminants are? And B, when we are likely to see the remediation strategy for this, for the site?
It's condition four, councillor Robinson. It's a pre-commencement. On page 89, condition to include item four, contaminated land submission of remediation scheme pre-commencement. So all that would be done before any work started on the site. Okay, so I'm just about to ask for people to indicate whether or not. It is a very difficult decision, I think, for all of us. But can I see all those in favour of granting this application with all the additional information we've asked to come back on the detail? And all those against? Any abstentions? Right, so that's two abstentions, everyone else voting in favour. Thank you very much. That's, I think, a very difficult issue for all of us. But I think we've given it a lot of attention this evening, which was absolutely right. Can we then go back to considering item, where do I find my agenda? Item nine, which is land at 362 Oxford Road. On page 57, which is Steve Beiger is going to introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Full planning permission is sought for a new build development of 26 flats on a vacant plot occupying part of the former Battle Hospital. It's an allocated site, allocated under reference WR3J. The proposals are identical to those approved under reference 201391 in June 2021, except for the fact that the previous permission secured eight affordable dwellings on site, equating to 30% of the overall number of dwellings. The current proposal seeks to reduce the amount of affordable housing with the applicant originally suggesting zero provision based on their submitted viability assessment. Both the applicant and the council's valuer agree that the current scheme is in significant financial deficit. And based on the figures provided, it would not be financially viable to build, particularly due to the increase in build costs since the previous permission was granted. However, it is also the case that a critical need for affordable housing exists in Reading Borough and the failure to provide a policy-compliant amount of affordable housing as part of the permission, particularly on an allocated site such as this, would be harmful in respect of meeting that need. Financial viability is a material consideration, although the reason for the non-viability is also highly relevant to the amount of weight that should be given. Officers made it clear to the applicant that the initial 0% offer would be unacceptable due to the significant harm to meeting housing need and achieving the mixed and balanced communities in the context of the critical need for affordable housing that has been identified in the borough. A negotiated position has since been arrived at whereby 11.5% of the housing units would be secured on site, comprising two-bedroom flats and one-one-bedroom flat. The remaining 18.5% would be subject to a deferred payments mechanism to capture any increased profitability for further investment into affordable housing elsewhere in the borough. In this particular instance, officers are particularly mindful of the regeneration benefits of bringing this long-term vacant site forward for development, as well as the wider benefits previously identified under the exstant permission. On balance, it is considered that the harm arising from the shortfall in affordable housing is marginally outweighed by the overall benefits and that permission could be granted on this basis as set out in the recommendation on pages 57 to 59 of my agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Gavin?
Thank you, Chair. This is land which was, those of us who've been around a while will know it's part of the former Battle Hospital site and has been empty for a long, long time. It was, those of us who live in the area, we were all very excited when there was the idea that it was going to be a health centre, but that fell away and it was reallocated in the local plan as housing land, which, having demonstrated that a health centre wasn't required, seemed to be a good compromise. And in 2019, the developer came forward with an application, brought it to this committee with a 30% affordable housing offer in it. The application was accepted. And today, three years later, three and a bit years later, the developer has come forward with absolutely virtually the same application. There is a slight difference in the sizing of the balance of the housing which is on offer, but it is essentially the same application. But now they are only offering 11.5% of affordable housing. Now, it's my belief that we, the council and people who absolutely need affordable housing, should not be the ones that pay for the fact that the developer sat on this land for three years without developing it. Building costs have gone up, wages have no doubt gone up, the value of land may well have gone up. But in a sense, that is not the problem of this planning authority. Our policy is that we ask for 30% of affordable housing. And my belief is that we should stick to this. It's the same application that came forward, which we accepted in 2019. And I see absolutely no reason why we should now allow, because of changing economic situation for the developer, we should now accept less. There are still people in this town who are desperate for affordable housing. And it's to them we owe the greatest obligation, not to the profit margins of developers. So I would propose that we refuse this application on the basis it does not meet our policy on 30% affordable housing.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, you were indicating?
Thank you very much. I agree entirely with everything councillor Gavin just said. I'm disappointed that even though we're bringing back, we're bringing back some empty land into use. I think it's a very good use of that land in that location. But I'm again disappointed we're on the unhappy path of not meeting our 30% affordable housing contributions. And this is just one of many applications we've seen in this municipal year. And I think we should try and, I think, we're going down a very slippery path here. And I think we should, we've got to start holding a bit firmer on things as councillor Gavin said. And I will also be minded to refuse this on the same basis.
Thank you. Councillor Lang, you were next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I find myself in total agreement with councillor Gavin and councillor Moore. This is an application that caved in with the full 30% affordable housing and then comes back to us with 11.5%. It's not the planning authority's job to protect developers' profits. It's that they should provide the affordable housing element that they agreed to. And we, it's quite a volatile market out there, we recognise that. And I think it's probably only going to get a bit more bumpy over the years to come. Doesn't bode well with the affordable housing element when we have our new Prime Minister trust, who states in the hustings that she viewed affordable housing targets as, I think the words were, a Stalinist Whitehall-led initiative. So that's where I am on that note. I won't be supporting this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page?
Yeah, I agree with the comments that are made. I wonder if I could just invite colleagues to focus on paragraph 6.8 on page 67, which I had to read about 10 times before I actually believed it. We're being told that the current application or the previous application that was consented wasn't viable. And then we're told that even if we were minded to approve this latest application, quotes, "The advice received is that the scheme would still be unviable even if no affordable housing were to be provided." So it's an absolutely bizarre situation. And I would suggest that probably the recent changes that we were promised in viability rules simply aren't working because I doubt very much, although I've not seen the detailed viability assessment, that the developer is taking any hit on the profit margin. And as always, in order to protect the developer profit margin, it's the local authority that's asked to take the hit. And if it's not on the public realm, it's on the affordable housing element. And I think we really do have to send a clear signal to developers that this is not acceptable. But I wonder if Mr Beiger's in a position to share with us whether the developer, for example, has dropped his profit margin, perhaps down to half of what they normally might be willing to do. I doubt very much, but perhaps if he can share a bit more around that. But why is it that a developer feels the need to spend time and money on an application that isn't viable? So there's clearly, somebody's fooling somebody, I would suggest. But anyway, I strongly support us rejecting the application for the reasons that colleagues have rightly set out.
Do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have the precise figures in front of me, but my understanding is that they have a fairly standard developer profit, which flows into the assessment as a cost. And that's one of the costs that the developer has to cover. So it's a fairly standard profit. I think it's normally around 20%. But I don't have the exact figures in front of me, of course. I think our valuer colleagues would have to give us a bit more clear advice on that.
But you're not aware of any?
No, 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 no large scale, no.
Seeing anybody else. Oh, councillor Hornsby-Smith?
Yes, I'm really surprised that this has gone down to 11%. This is a prime location. It's right on a major bus route. It's on the edge of a district centre and it's 300 yards away from Reading West Station. So if, to be improved, yes. I think if we don't stick with our 30% on this one, our credibility in terms of that policy would be down to zero. Because this is just about the ideal situation where it could be and should be implemented, because that's the needs of our population. I have a separate query, which is about the housing mix, which I recognise as a subsidiary concern, but it is a concern. On section 6.26 on page 71, the report states that the overall mix is supported and complies with the objectives of policy H2. Now, the number of three-bedroom units proposed is 30%, is eight. Now, policy H2 states, "As a minimum, on new developments for 10 or more dwellings outside the central and defined district and local centres, planning decisions will ensure that over 50% of dwellings will be of three bedrooms or more." bedrooms or more. And I wanted to ask, how does this comply with that policy? And why is it stated in the paper?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just need to check whether it's in a district centre, because I think the Tesco.
I can confirm that in paragraph 669, it says it's adjoining the district centre.
Many of these points are sort of carrying forward from the previous exstant permission. So it says of, I think it says of that one, yes, I mean, that would be possibly an error in the in the overall report. I think that's something we'd have to consider.
Can I come back, Chair? I mean, the concern, the reason I'm sort of hitting you with that is because in an application, in a constituent's concern, wanting to move from a two to a three bedroom house, the reply I got back from the housing staff was that there were 21 successful applications to move from a two to a three bedroom house after the 1st of January 2020. There were 329 applications. So clearly, there is a real need for three bedroom houses, and that's not being met. So this is why I would, personally, I support the idea of the 30%, but also feel that that 50% policy is also vital. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else indicating. So I'll move this to the vote in terms of us turning down the recommendation to grant the planning permission and replacing it with a recommendation or a proposal to refuse the planning permission on the grounds particularly of the and I was just going to come on to that.
Sorry.
For the main reason being that they do not meet the 30% affordable housing. And in fact, as I understand it, when you were negotiating with them, their starting point was no affordable housing on site. So you managed to get them up to 11%. But that's still a long way off the 30. And I agree with what people have said about the need to give a very clear message that we're not going to roll over and just accept this. And I would also point out on this application that they had permission, as councillor Gavin said, back in 2019. Why didn't they get on and build it then, before costs went up and all the rest of it? So very interesting that they've chosen now, when there's economic instability, to come back and try and get rid of the affordable housing, in my view. Anyway, back to the main reason for refusing this is that they do not meet our policy of 30% affordable housing. Is there anything else people think we should? Do you want to add in something about?
I wanted to add the bit about the 50%, which comes from policy H2.
And it doesn't comply with policy H2. Yep.
Chair, the only difficulty with that is the exstant permission. So the permission has been granted for a scheme broadly the same character, the same mix. So it'd be entirely up to the committee, but you just need to be aware that the exstant permission also doesn't secure.
Okay, well, Chair, if it helps, I'll withdraw that. But I do feel that the report is inaccurate. And that annoys me because I feel I'm being misled here. And I'm not happy about that.
So the reason for recommending or for us refusing planning permission is primarily the 30% affordable housing that we require, and they're not meeting that. So can I see all those in favour of rejecting this application? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
So, Chair, do we need the reason clarified for the minutes in terms of the wording? Or, so just the reason for the minutes, we need the reason, the wording for the reason for refusal? I can offer. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that was well. Yeah.